Okay, I'd like to call the Village Board for Tuesday, January 23rd. To order, please. Roll call.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Present.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Bukowsk.
Here.
Trustee Melcheski.
Here.
President Cardowski.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
And please remember all of our men and women throughout the world. Okay, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes. Adam, President.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number five, action on open and closed minutes from December 19th, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, oath of office for our two new public safety officers.
At this time, I'd like Public Safety Officer Wyatt Vesseth and Public Safety Officer Benjamin Walker come forward, please. Give you a quick introduction of our two newest officers. Public Safety Officer Wyatt Vesseth. Officer Wyatt Vesseth was hired on June 5th, 2017. Prior to joining us, Wyatt worked for the Saint Norbert College as a professional campus security officer. He's a graduate of Saint Norbert College with a bachelor's degree in psychology and a minor in Spanish. Wyatt graduated in May from the N W T C Police Academy. Public Safety Officer Benjamin Walker. Officer Benjamin Walker was hired on September 18th, 2017. Ben previously worked full-time as a police officer at the city of Green Bay. And prior to that, he was a Wisconsin Department Administration Capitol Police in Madison. At this time, we'll be doing the oath of office. Raise your right hand. Recite the oath, please.
as he'll do the pinning for Public Safety Officer Wyatt Vesseth.
I feel like the Marines just put that baby on or... I don't think they do that anymore.
And I ask Katie Walker, the wife of Benjamin Walker.
There you go. Good luck, guys.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. Thank you. Okay. Number seven, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Do we have any public that would like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda? Anybody wishing to speak on items not on tonight's agenda? Okay, moving forward. Written communications and/or announcements.
I had one email. That was it, on the Marcus Theaters.
This is a time that I'm going to say... I got a phone call today. I was actually in my office once today, from all the meetings that we had. And I was able to get one phone call. And a lady called and she just wanted to say that... She wanted to tell me how great our public works department was because our roads were great and shouldn't have to worry about sliding all over the place because they had put a very... A good amount of salt on our roads and not everybody's roads were as good as ours. So, kudos to our public works department, Doug.
Take a bow.
Okay, number nine, action on consent agenda, which is request to approve operator's license, review department reports, and budgeted expenditures. Does anybody want anything pulled?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve those. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number 10, public hearings. 10-1, public hearing on resolution number R-1-1-18 regarding the vacation of a portion of William Charles Court located in the village of Ashwabna in Brown County, Wisconsin. Is there anybody here that would like to speak for or against this? We have nobody for or against this item.
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close that public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10-2, public hearing on ordinance number 01-2-18, rezoning parcel number VA-178-14 from Community Business District B3 to Special Business District SB located at 2760 South Oneida in the village of Ashwabna in Brown County, Wisconsin. Anybody like to speak for or against this item? Anybody like to speak for or against this item? Okay.
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close that hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
What the heck am I looking at?
Motion carried. 10-3, public hearing regarding ordinance number 01-1-18, rezoning parcel VA-56-41... Excuse me. VA-56-4-1 from Light Industry District L1 to Sports and Entertainment District SE. Anybody in this area... In here would like to speak for or against this public hearing? Anybody like to speak at this public hearing? Okay.
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The hearings are closed. Okay. Number 11, 11A, action on resolution number R-1-1-18 regarding the vacation of a portion of William Charles Court located in the village of Ashwabna in Brown County, Wisconsin.
Yes, as you see by the attachment, this is the ball but a cul-de-sac of William Charles Court to actually to be vacated. As you're aware, the Slindy development that's moving forward will be actually for apartments there. The road will actually turn and head south to Marvell, so it will not be a dead end anymore. But the ball but a cul-de-sac needs to be vacated to allow for that development.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R-1-1-18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11B, action on ordinance number 01-2-18, rezoning parcel number VA-178-14 from Community Business District 3 to Business District... To Special Business District SB located at 2760 South Oneida Street in the village of Ashwabna in Brown County, Wisconsin. Todd.
As you see in the attached packet, this is the Hardees. I should say it's actually right now vacant. It is the Hardees store on the corner of, I think it's Phoenix Way and Southernia Street. As part of that, the Shell Station next door is actually going to be enlarging, I guess redeveloping there. They would like to combine both parcels, build a new convenience store, gas station, with filling at that location. And the Hardees will be actually built into the new building. So it will be a convenience store, filling station along with the new Hardees fast food restaurant. In order to do that, in order to combine that, we do have to... The gas station will be located on this new parcel, so therefore we do have to rezone it to special business.
Okay.
Move to approve ordinance 01-2-18.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 01-2-18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11C, action on ordinance number 01-1-18, rezoning parcel VA-56-4-1 from Light Industry District L1 to Sports Entertainment District SE. Here.
The requested rezoning is for the 2.5 acre village-owned parcel on the south side of Mike McCarthy Way. The request is to rezone the property from Light Industrial I1 to Sports Entertainment SE to facilitate the development of a six-story, 92-room Comfort Suites Hotel on the site. The developer is in the audience if you have any questions specifically for him. Otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions you would have.
Move to approve the ordinance 01-1-18.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 01-1-18. All those in favor...
Mary, I just want to make a comment here real quick.
Okay.
Basically, we're... I just want everybody to know even that's out there, these items, we're going through them fairly quickly. They're big items. There are things that are happening in the village of Ashwabna, but this isn't the first time that we've talked about it. We've talked about this, these last several things quite a bit over the last year in a lot of cases. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows it's not just a one thing, one time deal that we don't... That we know about what's happening here.
Right. But that's part of why I was only in my office for one phone call today because of all the meetings that we've had, yes. I shouldn't go through these quite so quick all the time because I've dealt with these things. We as a board have dealt with these things for well over a year. So, yes, we are... We're approving them, but we have seen them over and over and over.
I think Mark makes a great, great point. Thank you for doing that. These things are well-vetted, not just at this...
Yes.
At this meeting, but at a lot of committee meetings and other discussions.
Yes.
Good point, Mark.
Yep. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 01-1-18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11D, request to approve development agreement with the Wawurka Group Bohemian Park for parcel Tony.
All right, attached as part of the packet is a copy of the development agreement that has been agreed to as far as form and language. Essentially, what that is, is the final piece of finalizing what, as was indicated, is the Bohemian Park, also known as the United Development, located here on the corner of Holmgren Way and Morris Avenue. Essentially, the terms of the development agreement indicate that there will be tax increment financing provided in a pay-as-you-go format where the developer will be based... Will be provided tax incentive based upon the actual increment that they created. And there are... There will be four buildings constructed on the site with no less than 50 residential units in each building. The first building, which is also known as Building 3, which will be constructed on Holmgren Way first, will have a little bit of a proposal for a front-loaded tax increment financing of 75% of the increment created for the first five years and then 40% of the increment created for the remaining five years. So the proposal is essentially for a period of 10 years, which is split between five and five, and then the remaining three buildings will be 50% of the tax increment for a 10-year period for each building. And then the last essential term is that the developer shall obtain a certificate of occupancy for any of those buildings to receive the tax increment financing no later than December 31st of 2031. So the development agreement that is contained in the packet reflects those terms.
Can't we get a different name? I'm just kidding. WeWurka? Where did that come from?
That's the group.
Oh, for the developer?
Yes.
Probably not. Sounds like a W-2 program. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You certainly didn't want that one. Thank you.
Okay, any questions?
Well, good work, Tony. That's good work. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the development agreement with the Wawurka Group. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11E, request to approve development agreement with Village Center LLC. It says Allison up here.
We're just trying to throw you off. It's really Tony.
The two of you together.
Yeah, well, as I say, we can tag team. Essentially, this is a copy of... A copy has been provided on your desk here this evening of the development agreement that has been now agreed to with Village Center LLC, which is also known as the Slindy Development located over at William Charles Court.
They also don't want the name of the place, we tried, but...
There's no one here from WeWurka, by the way, is there? Oh, okay, I'm safe.
You changed the names on them enough. I mean, this one changed from, I don't know.
I'm used to United on the other one. That's all right.
This one will actually, we believe, be named The Element. But their LLC name is Village Center LLC.
Yeah.
Just to further confuse you.
Yeah.
So essentially, the terms and conditions of this will be 3.5 million of tax increment to be provided to the developer with a specified payment schedule that is, I think goes out to 2041, if I recall correctly. But the specific payments, as far as the guarantee that the developers' principles have made their... Will be essentially be making that payment to repay the TIF loan in the amount of $3.5 million. This is again a five... Or proposed five-building project located over by William Charles Court that will start with Buildings 1 and 2, one along Marvell Lane, and then the newly-created road that will run north and south from what is now William Charles Court and connect with Marvell Lane. There'll be... Building 2 will be just north of Building 1 on Marvell. So those should be... Are proposed to begin construction by April 1st of this year and then to be completed construction by December 31st of 2019. And then the developer will have options to develop Buildings 3, 4, and 5 over the next few period of years after that. This will be, I believe, approximately about 350 units with all five proposed buildings to again provide additional housing here in the village.
Tony, one question I have is, this projected a 3.5 million TIF incentive, the last one is a percentage of increment. How do they compare?
The one that we just considered as a pay-as-you-go, so that will be based upon the actual increment that's created and then calculated on an annual basis, and then the payment will be made to the developer.
But as projections go, I guess, are they similar?
Yes, I mean, in a sense of as far as, well...
Overall.
They are in the sense that there's assessed value that's been projected and used to kind of project what the value, we believe the value will be into the future and what will be supported by the TIF.
Overall, we have a greater financial contribution into The Element than we do the United Bohemian Park project, in part because we had acquired this land and we were invested in trying to solve a problem here. And then the other project came later, and as we kind of talked through it and just trying to moderate the apartments coming online and trying to pace ourselves, it was a discussion we had with the board in trying to moderate that amount going forward and trying to solve the problem we had over here.
Now, I've heard this, as some of you have also heard many times in committee meetings, between the two apartment developments, what is approximately going to be the assessed value in that area for the two?
Just these two buildings...
Projected.
Projected will be over 16 million. Their increment is 14.6 million, but we have almost $2 million in tax base that's our... That was already there that would be taken into consideration, so...
When all nine buildings get done?
When will all nine?
No.
No, when they're all... When all nine are done, the projected, isn't it like...
In excess of 40.
Right. Yeah. So, just to give you a little bit of a...
Just to note, in terms of this, so the first development agreement you just approved, that was an approval for all four buildings going forward. That sets that in motion, and you won't see that again. Their incentive is to just get their buildings going and get the value up, obviously more helpful for them in terms of the remaining of the TIF life there, which there is considerable. In this particular one, we are approving the TIF and the setup for the first two buildings, which have already gone through site plan. The next three buildings, though, would come back to you each time for a new financial discussion. This does not find us in any way in terms of what our financial assistance would be for the next three buildings.
Right. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to...
Actually, I don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion.
No.
Do we have a motion to...
I'll move to approve the request for the development agreement for the Village of Center. Also, I'd like to add that this has been an ongoing thing for a number of months, too, so that the public knows this is something we're not pushing through.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the development agreement with Village Center LLC. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11F, action on Class B beer/Class C wine license for Duval Properties LLC, DBA Press Start Rec Room.
Before you, Mr. Wayne Duval is here. He and his wife recently closed Future Fitness Plus located at 830 Van Appelen Way, and they have come up with a new entertainment business venture which would require a Class B beer and Class C wine. And Mr. Duval is here to take any questions for you to... In regard to their concept. Wayne, if you'd like to step up.
I would.
Well, just so you're aware, the Public Works and Protection Committee took a look at this, and this gentleman was here with, I think, one of your partners was with you last time, no?
No.
Okay. And, that's right, you were... Yeah, you were alone. Anyway, we took a look at this, and it looks like something is very interesting, but he can certainly say it better than I can, so...
Yeah, we traveled... My wife and I traveled around the country, and we've done a lot of research on this. Once again, this is ongoing over a year or two, not just, you know, the last month or whatever, but after 21 years of what we were doing, selling fitness equipment, hot tubs things, it was time to do something fun now. You know, as we're getting older, it's time to do something fun. Because it's like being a surgeon. When you deliver a $4,000 treadmill, it better be perfect every single time, and that's a young man's game, so... We've talked to a lot of kids, or not kids, but 21 to 40 years old around the country, so it wasn't just regional here. And we asked them about the concept, and we interviewed over 200 people, and they all said it was a great concept, and they'd all embrace it. And then after that, we asked, if there was no beer, would you revisit? And over 75% said no. They'd come to out of curiosity to check it out, but in that age group, a lot of them were saying too that, finally, something fun that we can do, you know, instead of just sitting in a bar and drinking. There's, you know, we have all kinds of games, tournaments, prizes, and it's ongoing all the time. And we also have Family Day where there will be no alcohol served. Just so you know, I don't drink either. So I guess, any questions or recommendations?
These other facilities that you visited, what sort of population base did these communities have?
They were all real large cities like Nashville, Tennessee, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Tampa, Florida, Memphis, Tennessee, Madison, Wisconsin, Kenosha, Wisconsin.
You done, Mike? Question I have, knowing the property where you are, I see a lot of for sale, for lease signs in there. What's that all about?
That was our Plan B, where if we weren't granted a license, we couldn't open up, is what we wanted to do. So, as it sits right now, the building's empty, and I'm just throwing my retirement fund into paying for mortgages and taxes and things like that on an empty building. So, if we didn't get a license, then we would sell the building or lease it. And if we were granted a license, we would take the building off the market.
Also, looking at some of these pictures you sent here, what age group are you looking at to serve here?
21 to 40.
21. Is there any carding or anything that you do?
Yes.
When people walk in?
It'll be just... It'll be just like a bar. I mean, when they come in, they will have bracelets, and they will have to come up to the bar every time and purchase a beer or wine. We will have bouncers, and we will have bartenders. We'll have waitresses, servers.
So it'll have a bar-like atmosphere along with activities to go with it that you're talking about?
Right. The bar will be relatively small. Most of it's going to be food.
And the food was what we were looking at here on your sheet?
Yeah, I brought an updated version, and I don't know if you have those in front of you.
Yes, we do.
But we solidified what we were going to use for ovens and things like that, and that's where we got to nail down our menu.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any live music venue you anticipate?
If we have any live music, it's going to be local bands that basically want to play for free.
(laughing) Good luck.
Well, you know, some people just want to play music and...
Sure, sure.
But I'm... I've been a long-tenured businessman here in Ashwabna since 2004. 96 is when I opened the business, but we donate a lot to this community, a lot of good causes, women's shelters, things like that, where I'm like a father figure as far as, you know, as a business is run. Reputation means everything to me. Money doesn't... Money's good, but reputation is everything.
I'm hope to approve the Class B beer/Class C wine license for Duval Properties LLC doing business as Press Start Rec Room.
I've got one more question.
I need a second.
You second it first.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, comment.
There's a couple of rooms that are VIP rooms, so those are walled off from the rest of the area?
Yes, yes.
Are... Is somebody able from your business to go in to make sure things are handled properly?
Yes, it'll be an open...
There's not alcohol?
It'll be an open room, and there are cameras in every one.
Is... Do you plan on having anybody actively...
Yes.
Walking in? You know, you're going to have...
Yes, yes.
Potential there for somebody bringing alcohol in. There's minors in there, and obviously you want to know what's...
Everything that... Any hiding spots in the place will have cameras and people walking the floor.
Okay.
Chief, do you have any issues with this?
No issues with it, pretty much from the committee meeting as far as the business plan and how the sales of alcohol and how they're going to go about controlling people coming in. Public safety has no issues.
Okay, thank you. One thing, and it's probably in here, but I didn't read it. What are going to be your hours of operation?
I've got them on the list here. Sunday, it'll be 12 to 11. That's Family Day. That's no alcohol. Monday through... Monday, Tuesday, be 4 to 11. 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM on Wednesday, 4 to 2:00 AM. Wednesday, four to two A.M. on Thursday, Friday and Saturday, be twelve to two.
Okay.
So every Sunday's family?
Family, no alcohol.
That's a good idea.
So, I mean, the kids can come, you know, there's going to be teenagers, they still say they have nothing to do. So on Saturday from twelve to six, they can all come in, they can have birthday parties, we're going to have parties, we're going to have sleep-ins with high school kids, too, on certain days, you know, just so, and they can play games all night with adult supervision. And then Sunday, twelve to eleven is Family Days, period. And you come in and it's soda or food.
One quick question to back up Chris here. Cameras throughout the building, fine, I don't have a problem with that. But I see a lot of businesses have a lot of cameras and the only time they're monitored is after the troubles happen. You go back and review it and figure it out.
We're going to, there's going to be floor walkers that are constantly, because if you serve to a minor, we know the implications. There goes my reputation. One minor gets caught, I'm done. And I will not let that happen, period. It's not going to happen.
I'm not picking you on that question.
I understand.
But I see a lot of cameras and they're only monitored after the fact.
Right.
Good.
Any other comments?
Or if you have any recommendations, I'd certainly like to hear them.
It's your money. Good luck, do the right thing. You're going to do it, you're going to do it right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the Class B beer, Class C wine for Duval Properties LLC, DBA, press start rec room. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, opposed.
Okay, six to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. Eleven G, action on Class B beer license for Marcus Cinemas of Wisconsin LLC, DBA, Bay Park Cinema.
This item passed committee as well on a three to two vote. Marcus Cinemas of Wisconsin, doing business as Bay Park Square, is seeking a Class B beer license. Mr. Rob Novak, Vice President of Concessions, is here to entertain any questions you might have.
Good evening.
I was at the Public Works and Protection Meeting, listening to his speech. I'd like for you to tell us about your business again, which was held, like I said, the Public Works Meeting.
Absolutely.
I think you did a good job at it, but now that we're in a board meeting, I'd like to hear it again, so we all understand.
Sure, absolutely. Just so everyone understands, obviously Marcus Theater Corporation is now in our eighty-second year of operations throughout the Midwest. We've been at the Bay Park Cinema since we built that location in nineteen ninety-six. That location is managed and has been generally managed by Jody Rose, who's here in the audience who accompany me with today. She has been at the building since we built that property. Marcus Theaters, the theater industry as a whole, has gone through kind of a change and evolution into what guests want. We've started that commitment here in Bay Park with the addition of recliner seating, which we put in about two years ago now, because that's one of the directions that movie theaters went. One of the other directions that movie theaters went, as we go to protect our market share, and when I say protect our market share, it's both against competitors and against other forms of media, as consumers tend to want to watch movies in different ways and consume it, whether it's on their phone, their iPad, at home, streaming, whatever it may be. And one of the demands is that we, from our guests that we've seen, is that we offer a more diverse selection of products at the concession stand or food and beverage. So one of the things we've done is made a commitment throughout the Midwest and the country to start doing that. And some of the things that we've done is add in full-service lounges, we've added fresh food service, expanded concessions and whatnot. In the case of what we're seeking here at Bay Park Cinema, is we're looking to be able to serve beer. You may say why we look to do that, I mean, the guest that comes in today tends to be a mature guest and one of the things they ask for us is different selections. We've had theaters that we've put full-service bars in, we've had theaters that we've put beer service in the counter. Just so everyone's clear, at this point, Marcus Theaters operates sixty-nine theaters throughout the Midwest. We have forty-four theaters, which we have some variation of alcohol service at. Twenty-five of them are bars, six of them are counter service, where we serve draft beer along with fresh food. If you go to our Sheboygan Theater, you would see that. We have other theaters that serve hamburgers. If you go to Appleton, at the Valley Grand Cinema, you'll see that they serve beer through that. Additionally, we have full-service restaurants. And then we have seven theaters, including our Green Bay East Theater, which is off the highway, that serve just canned beer. And that's our objective here. And as part of that, we have a full business plan for how we address serving beer, because obviously we understand that this is a family environment and a lot of people say, well, how are you going to serve beer? How are you going to police it? How are you going to monitor it? One of the things we do is we have pretty strict policies with this, I feel. It's a one beer per ID, one beer per person. So no matter how old the guest is, it is our expectation and is our standard that if you are able to sell the beer of age to sell any alcoholic beverage in any of our locations, you are expected and demanded to ID that individual. No matter if the person looks to be eighteen or they look to be eighty-one, it doesn't matter to us, that is our policy. Additionally, going above and beyond that, we have a strict policy at all of our locations because we hire an outside company called the Bars Organization, which comes in and audits our properties. So randomly, not an employee of the Marcus Corporation, but somebody else will come into our location and randomly walk up to one of our associates and try to buy an alcoholic beverage. If that associate does not follow our procedures, which includes carding that person regardless of age prior to either ringing in the purchase or attempts to serve the alcoholic beverage prior to actually receiving and checking that person's identification, they receive a red card. It is our policy within our organization that if we have someone who receives a red card, we do terminate that person, because that is a standard that we hold. And we've had to let go, unfortunately, good employees throughout our company. There's been about, I was just referring to Jody about this, we've had about five employees over the past three to four years, who we have a zero tolerance on, because we do understand the gravity that comes with getting a liquor license. If you so choose to grant us that, we get that. Because our reputation to stand before you and ask for a liquor license is based off the forty-four previous liquor licenses that we've asked for and obtained through our different Midwestern cities, because we understand what goes with selling liquor. And I think the other thing to understand is for people that have consternation about alcohol in movie theaters, movie theaters sell alcohol because we have guests who ask for it and whatnot, and they look at it as a form of indulgence. But it's not the same in terms of, when we think of sporting events, in terms of consumption. There's no natural breaks in movie theaters in, when you watch a movie, we don't have intermissions anymore. So if a gentleman or a lady were to choose to buy a beer at our concession stand, they're probably doing so before the movie. We don't send people inside the auditorium to sell during the movie. There's not times where you have a natural breaks to walk out and repurchase alcoholic beverages. It would be your choice, you're going to miss the movie if you choose to do so. So we don't find people who are going in there to overindulge. It's an item that's offered and some guests elect to do it. I also want people to understand, this is not a giant change. We don't see people shifting and saying, oh, all of a sudden, that the fifty percent of people that were buying carbonated beverages, soda pop and theaters are now buying alcohol. I know when I spoke before you guys last time, I was saying it's about one in twenty and I was just running the numbers based off of our financials to give you an accurate, of our food and beverage revenue, including concessions, we're talking about seven percent of the money. So this is not a giant windfall for us, this is not something, I'm not, yes, from a capitalistic point of view, we're looking to take, you know, make money off of this, but it's also extending to the guests to say, hey, this is a convenience. This is a market differentiator, that's why we do it, that's why we did it in Green Bay, it's why we want to do it here in Nashwoben. I would also add one other thing. It is something, too, that when we look at, you do see other businesses other than movie theaters in this area, Chuck E. Cheese and Sir Bounce a lot, which are obviously aimed at children, those are spaces that have it, that in addition are family environments that also have beer and wine licenses. So it's not just movie theaters that are, you know, offering a variety of drinks.
Just curious, what the, the age demographic, how that's changed in the last ten or fifteen years, especially, like you referenced before with phones and iPads and, and the younger generation, I would imagine especially, it takes a big bite out of that.
It does. I mean, if you look at, the movie-going population in the cinemas is aging. It's, it's a much more mature audience. I mean, you look at some of our most popular days, I was just over at the theater today and it's Five Dollar Tuesday, it's a value day, we get a lot of folks that like that. Our Friday Young at Heart special, which we run, it's a senior citizen day. Senior citizens and adults, empty nesters, tend to be some of the best moviegoers. If you look at some of the statistics that have come out by the motion picture industry, we tend to have an older audience. Now, we welcome young folks, we want young folks, we want to have a family conducive environment, but we're kind of behooved to the movies that come out as well. You know, for every time, we're in Oscar season right now and there's a lot of great movies that are out there and you just had the Academy Award nominations today and those movies are aimed at mature audiences and adults, so, you know, we're always, we're always trying to stay ahead of technology and amenities to keep people coming back to our theaters, which are in the community and keep, give people a place to go. And that's part of the reason for this, because, you know, people ask, well, I want to go somewhere because the competitor has alcohol, or the competitor has more offerings, you know, better seats. It's part of the commitment we've made here to try to make that theater better at Bay Park, by when we offered our Dream Lounger recliners and the two super screens and upgraded the sound, that was one of the reasons to do it, keep people coming to the movies.
I don't know how that came up. There we go, sorry.
It's okay.
One of the only questions I had was, will this hinder, I guess, kids under the age of eighteen getting jobs at the, I know you obviously.
No, no, obvious, no, 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 not at all. What it's, it's, we would never, no, we're fully, we need sixteen and seventeen-year-olds working for us, we need eighteen-year-olds, we need, I mean, it is very hard to get a lot of people that want to come to work right now, because the job market is pretty robust for people to go find employment elsewhere and there's a variety of jobs out there. No, I mean, what does it mean? It means that anybody who is of age, who can serve, will have to, will have to have somebody on staff at all times, whether it's one of the general, the general manager, Jody, who's here, one of her assistant managers, they're going to have to be properly trained to make sure that they can, that they're fully vetted. Our system would be, if there was a sixteen-year-old working, no different, because it would be sold out of concession stand, obviously they couldn't complete the transaction if a consumer walked up and said, I'd like to buy a Miller Lite, then at that point, they have to stop the transaction, no different than at the grocery store. You know, the grocery stores have cashiers that are under the age that can sell, they just can't complete the transaction, have to bring somebody of age who's had training to come in to complete that transaction.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak against this? I would need you to come up, though, I have.
My name is Lynette Clancy and I live on Leroux Lane. I, I do have a concern, because I do drop my teenager off at the theater, and it's still one safe place. That you can drop your kids off and you don't have to worry about alcohol being there. You don't have to worry about people drinking and being belligerent. And I understand your, like, they're just going to sell one can and they can't go out, but it, it also opens the box where you might sell mid-movie at some point, you know, because that's a, that you're having more of a, of a revenue. It's, I think that you will decrease how many jobs you're having for teenagers, because you will have kids not, or parents not want them to be in that situation. The grocery stores now have the alcohol in a separate area, they don't always go to the, I mean, I grew up, I've worked in a grocery store. I, I just think it opens a Pandora's Box and I just don't feel it's something that's needed. I've talked to other parents and, and it's funny, because I know you had mentioned, Mark, that, you know, this has been going on for a year, a lot of these items and stuff like that. I learned about it in the press and I've talked to neighbors and I've talked to other people and, and they're just like, they were surprised. I, I was surprised to know that it's at the east side already. I, you know, I just, I, it's, it's surprising to me.
I completely respect and understand that. I mean, I can just tell you from happenstance, from the other movie theaters we operate, and based off the amount of associates that we employ at the Marcus Corporation, that for that regard, we have not had issues with hiring. We have a robust hiring program and we employ teenagers all the time and we still continue to, and it hasn't impacted us. And I would also say, with regard to the controlled environment and what goes on in our audit, you know, what goes on in our other theaters that sell alcohol, we have not had problems. And I would stand before you as someone who's gone throughout the Midwest, the different city councils, no different than this, and different communities, and stand by that. I mean, we understand, when you sell liquor, the onus that's on us is very high to uphold what we're making the covenant with this community, with you as the consumer, with parents to make sure, I have three children of my own, Jody has two children, and I understand, you know, what that's like, and my children are just seven, five and three. And I understand what that's like and, but we understand, we want to keep your children coming back. And we want them to, but no different than Chuck E. Cheese and Sir Bounce a lot, you know, those are, those are family environments, too, and it's our job to make sure that those who come in are monitored and those who we are selling to are of sound mind. You know, no different than, I will say this, I mean, some of the biggest problems we have in some of our theaters, when it comes to people who come in, that we could term belligerent or maybe over, are people who come in off the street, who have overconsumed and come into our environment.
And so no one can come off the street and buy from your environment?
No, no, that's.
Unless they're.
Oh, no, no, you have to be a customer.
You have to buy a movie ticket.
Well, you'd have to come in, because remember, all alcohol will be sold beyond the box office and the ripper stand.
I can walk in and buy popcorn for my movie at home.
Well, to that respect, we're not going to, I guess, the difference would be with open container laws, we're not going to be selling a beer. If you were to walk in off the street and say, can I buy a Miller Lite, we wouldn't serve you that beer and then have you walk out the front door with it. I mean, that's not our, our goal's not to, I mean, pop, movie theater popcorn is a commodity. We look at that as something completely different. Movie theater popcorn is something that's unique, that is only made in movie theaters. A bottle of Miller Lite, a can of Miller Lite is something that can be purchased anywhere.
The other thing I would bring up is what Mr. Paul said, is how are you going to decrease teenage drinking? Because you have the darkness of the theater, you have an older individual buy the alcohol and in the darkness of the theater, now these teenagers are drinking.
That's an excellent question. It's something that, number one, we address at all of our other theaters, because we'd never serve soda and beer in the same cup nor vessel. So if you were to buy a soda in any Marcus Theater across the country, it's in a blue cup. In the case of what we would do here, no differently we do at Green Bay East, everything is sold in an aluminum bottle. It's only sold in those vessels, it's not transferred to a paper cup. So as part of the standard operating procedures of our theaters, Jody has staff members who were assigned to walk through those auditoriums. The actual vessel that it's sold in would stick above the cup holder, so you can obviously see when they're walking. And as we look to move to recliners throughout the building, you have a much larger spread or what we call the risers between the theaters. So when you actually walk in, it's much easier to check as to what a consumer would have. But it's no different than we still send ushers into auditoriums and have for years to make sure people aren't bringing in stuff from the outside. I mean, we, this is, you know, what goes on inside the auditorium and doing standard checks, those auditoriums is part of our standing operating procedures at all theaters, whether we sell alcohol or not.
Well, thank you for your time. I still don't completely agree.
Thank you, sorry, I didn't open the floor there, I forgot about it. But. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't open the floor there. I forgot about it. But, um, this, I have to say, before your presentation at Public Works, I was immediately against this, beer in the movie theater. Then after your presentation, I was like, well, that doesn't, I mean, it sounds as though you've, you've got a good program for checking. I talked with the chief, I said, do you have a problem with this? And he said, no. Um, I have clients that I've asked them who are movie-goers, they, they go to movies at least twice a week. They thought it, they went to some movie theater in Dallas, um, her and her girlfriend bought a bottle of wine and they sat at a table and, and drank the bottle of wine watching the movie and she thought it was a great thing. And another client, um, they had a, bought a pizza and they went into the theater and they had wine and beer and, and they liked it. The difference that I see in this is that there, there is no food other than your concession stand. And that, for me, makes a big difference because I have gotten calls. I, you know, got a call from Lynette and I got other calls from other people that, as Lynette said, that's one place where we can drop our kids off and we know that there's not alcohol. So I, I can't say that I'm for this yet. So I don't, I don't know how the vote's going to go.
I had communication too, and I'm not in favor of this. I'll say that right now.
I got a couple of comments here. Uh, I've asked for a list of places that have beer or beer and, and wine. Um, Chief, directing the question to you, have you had any calls at, I'm assuming you've got this list in front of you also, have you got any calls on, let's say, um, oh, I'm looking at the, uh, Chuck E. Cheese's or as a family outing. That's my first one that comes to my mind. But any one of these on this list here, have you ever gotten any calls with disturbance because of the alcohol, whether our children and adults around?
I can't answer that question because I wasn't privy to the list prior to coming to the meeting here tonight.
Okay.
So I don't want to go on record giving false information.
Okay. But it's, there's nothing sticking in your head saying, yeah, okay.
If we had, if we had an issue, what you're suggesting, um, we, I mean, through the work with the clerk's office, we'd be dealing with an alcohol issue, um, whether it's in violation of selling to minors or if it was causing a disturbance of some court, some sort, we'd be meeting with the managers of, of those properties.
Okay. Well, that's where I was going back to because if there's a problem in any one of these facilities, regardless if it's a full-blown bar or something that has beer or beer and wine, we definitely know it through applying for the license again and looking back at their record. Um, it just seems that alcohol, I'm going to go back to beer and wine again. There's a lot of places that have it regardless of what their business is. I'm looking at one here, Artful Expressions. I, correct me if I'm wrong, what kind of a menu do they have there? I know it's a place of art.
They do, they do have.
Yeah, they had to put a kitchen in.
Yeah, they put in a kitchen.
Okay. Now that you said kitchen, I remember that coming back to you.
Yeah.
But, uh, they, they do have some food to some extent. I think popcorn is a great absorber for alcohol, so I, I don't, I don't see that as, as a real big issue, although our village does a, uh, recommend, or not recommend, but demand having a, a full-blown kitchen. So I'm kind of stuck on it too. I guess I ask my questions.
I, I voted in favor of this at, at committee level. Um, I think that it's a recreational business in the term of recreation. Um, I think that the one before this, uh, if we don't allow Marcus that, we shouldn't allow the one before that, uh, because they're both in a similar type of a thing. And so, I mean, I, I don't think we can single Marcus up, Theater Cinema, out of attaining this. I think that they've got the stopgaps in place to check, recheck people. Um, it's a recre- again, it's recreational. The only thing, Mary, is if you, because of food.
Right. They don't have a kitchen. So they are, to me, they are not, you're comparing apples and oranges, um, because they don't have the kitchen. So that's the difference.
I was just, how are we defining like food? So I mean, is it percentage of sales or what we serve?
No, I would say, when I think of the movie theater, it's popcorn and candy, I'm thinking more like pizza and sub sandwiches and.
Well, I mean, we do sell hot dogs and we do sell pizza and we sell pretzel bites. I, I, I just, I want to, I just, I mean, we do have locations where we open up full-on kitchens.
Right.
But in our sake of what we sell in food, um, I mean, we consider, we have a, the Marcus Corporation has a fairly large food operation. I mean, when you consider what we sold last year, um, it was 10 times the amount of alcohol we sold, which included hot dogs, pretzels, pizza, and at, right down at the Bay Park. I mean, I just walked in there today, she had forty-five hot dogs on the grill because we sell two-dollar hot dogs every Tuesday as part of our five-dollar Tuesday program. Um, we do have a three-compartment sink and are bound by the same health department standard, standards that many of the other businesses in Ashwabanon are bound by. So, I mean, I guess, I, I just, in regards for applying for this license, I, with the contingency of food, I didn't know what was tied to that. I know in the Class D wine license, there is a contingency of sales to that license. We did not apply for that because at this present time, we have not, you know, decided to build a full-on kitchen. But I would not say that would, down the, down the road, that we would not come back and do that like we've done at many other theaters as we look to continue to upgrade amenities at this one.
If I may, Madam President, as a point of clarification, as it was alluded to this kitchen, before the law changed, it'll be two years this coming March thirtieth when the governor signed into, uh, law, some changes in, in state statute in one twenty-five. And one of those things is for the Artful Expressions, as was alluded to, at that time, you had a fifty-one percent of your sales in food and they had to, uh, put in a full-service kitchen.
Right.
That law has since changed. Now it's, it's to the wishes of the governing body. That fifty-one percent element, it no longer exists.
Right. But the full kitchen is where, what I'm looking at is the kitchen, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Class B beer license for Marcus Cinemas of Wisconsin LLC, GBA, Bay Park Cinema.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay.
Kate, we have a motion and a second to approve the Class B beer license for Marcus Cinemas of Wisconsin LLC.
Well, on, on the question, I, I too voted in favor at the committee. You make a great presentation. You're a good representative for your, for your business. You really are. I mean that sincerely. But boy, I tell you, what this young lady here said, it struck me that this is a place, at this moment, I don't know how I'm going to vote on this. I'll be very candid with you. I don't know if I can go up or down on it, but she said something that really struck me. We drop our kids off there and be relatively secure, at least from this point of view. Boy, that hit me like a ton of bricks. So, but I know you're taking all kinds of precautions. I understand that and that's, that's good for you. But I, I just, this, this one just gives me some trouble. I'll tell you, if it, if it passes, and again, I don't, at this moment, I can't tell you if I'm going up or down, but if it passes, I just hope to heck that, that it works in the sense that, that young kids don't get into it and, and, uh, you seem to be having success at the other places where you've, we have done this. But if, if it passes, uh, because if it, if there's some trouble, if there's trouble, you know better than anyone that there's going to be, pardon the expression, hell to pay. And so we, we just will be watching very closely.
I completely agree and I would add this, that we understand the steps, I mean, again, we know that our ability to go before the next city council lies in our ability to uphold what I'm agreeing to here. And we all look at movie theaters as sacred places for entertainment. And whether that's alcohol or public safety or security, we've taken steps throughout time to make sure we ensure that. Um, parents look to movie theaters as somewhere they can drop off. But it's our job to uphold it. I know we look at alcohol as an evil in some ways or in some way encroaching on that. But just like we've taken steps in other ways, as when movie theaters have been looked at as areas that were once sacred and have different things have happened, acts of violence, we've taken immediate steps. I mean, I'll just, I'll, I'll say this to you and I, it's not the same thing. So please don't ever think I'm throwing the parallel. But after Littleton, Colorado happened in two thousand twelve, that rocked us as an industry. And that took away the safety and sanity that a lot of people looked at going to movie theaters with, right? And we, as a corporation, made a strong commitment to putting door alarms in and we have a strong stringent policy where we have corporate office people like myself and we have a security personnel to go around and check our door alarms. And you can ask Jody and she could stand here, they're forced to wear pagers on their person at all times because of what happened that night that took away safety and security. Not every movie theater company goes along with this. Cinemark, who was the victim of that night, doesn't go along with this. That's one example. And that's why I point out the, the steps we've taken with the alcohol. And I agree with you. If there is something that were to go wrong in the steps that we set here, I'd be the first one to stand before you and say, it's on us. We owe it, but we owe it from a public safety standpoint, uphold those covenants. And that's how, that's how committed the Marcus Corporation is to it. We're not somebody who's going away tomorrow. Eighty-two years, twenty-six years at the Bay Park, you know, we're committed to that. And we're committed to all the communities that we want to be in. We're committed to those families. We hire, you know, the young children of this community to work in our, I mean, I was someone who served in the field for many years and I sat across the desk and from sixteen and seventeen-year-olds to try to make a positive impression on them. And I also took those, those, those individuals in, no different than Jody does, and looks at their parents and says, listen, I want to get your child off to a good start. Understanding that many of these children who elect to work for us were once customers of ours, who developed a love for the movie theater and they want to return that and stay with it and work through high school, maybe to go away to college and come home. We get that. We're not do, this isn't just a cash grab or a money grab. We are, again, we are committed to the Village of Ashwabanon, no different than we're committed to Green Bay, Appleton, Saukville, Cedar Creek and all those places.
Okay. I don't mean to cut you off. I'm going to call the question. Thank you.
Okay. Just a minute. We might have to open the floor. Did you want to make a comment? She would like to make a comment.
Call questions, call.
Well, she's been waiting here. That, that's her. I'll withdraw my, my mic. That's fine. She's been waiting here a long time.
Okay.
Matt, could you use the microphone? I can't hear you. I'm getting old.
Name and address.
Name and address, please.
I'm Shanta Velasami. Uh, I recently moved to Ashwabanon. Do you want my address?
Yes, please.
Uh, fourteen seventy-five Limerick Court. I agree with the previous comment. I won't be comfortable, you know, to take my kids when they serve the beer or alcohol in the movie theater. Without, you know, introducing issues, we don't have to find a solution. So if we are, say, for example, my son go to movie theater, I don't know, he won't buy it, but he's watching others, you know? I'm just introducing the, okay, you can drink like that. I don't want to that happen, you know, if I go to movie theater. That's my, my own perspective, you know, my personal comment on it. So.
Okay.
I've got one last thing.
Thank you.
Real quick, Mary. If Chuck E. Cheese and Sir Bounce-a-lot didn't serve it, I would be voting a different way. But there, I think there're in, and, and press start records. I mean, it's, I think they're all similar type of, uh, venues for kids and adults and families. Um, and we're in that tricky little thing. Um, I'm sitting here and she lives three doors from me. So, I mean, I know that it's a direct route. Uh, my vote is right now against what she's saying. I get that. But you know what? That's, you know, I, I got to go by what's past practice, what we have on our books and everything. And I just, I can't see not allowing it.
Well, could I, could I make a comment?
Sure.
So I am new to the board. Um, lived in Midland, Texas for about a year and a half after college. And I went to a movie theater down there where I was shocked when I walked in. Not only was there like a ropes course for little kids actually above your head, so kids are on harnesses and ropes and, you know, light up area. Um, they served alcohol and it was the first time I had ever been to a theater where they had a full-service, um, kitchens and alcohol. And not only was I shocked that they served alcohol, I was also shocked that they served buckets of beer and pitchers of margaritas. So I didn't see an issue there. It was a, now granted, it's a different type of situation where they had an arcade, they had a ropes course for little kids, and they also, right next to it, had that. Um, had I not been exposed to that prior, I might end up voting differently. Um, but I never experienced any issues at that theater and I ended up going back multiple times. Um, and they did have pretty strict, um, I, I guess just saying, having been predisposed to it and seeing that it didn't cause many issues, um, it's, I don't know. It, it, it does happen in other places, like you said, not only just here in Wisconsin, but throughout the nation and on a fully different scale than what he's talking about. So, um, it's just something that I've experienced myself and was, like I said, shocked at first, but then also shocked at the precautions they took to keep those issues handled, so.
I have to say that I think he's said, he, he gave a very good presentation and I wouldn't stop sending my child to the theater, you know, but I don't agree with it. I think that, that, that we just still have very few places in the world that are, are not, and I get it's a business and, and, and I, I really hope that if it is passed, that you guys take those precautions. And I know Jody, I, I, I mean, I respect her and, and I needed to say that because I, it's not against you or your business. It's, it's the thought that the world's getting smaller and smaller.
Okay.
I think, and, and, and is it Lynette?
Yes.
Bring up really valid points and especially the one that, um, it's one of the few places now that, that you can bring your kids to alcohol-free environments. And I struggle with this a little bit. However, I think the, the presence of the, of, of, of the way they're going to sell the beer, um, and, and just the footprint and the presence of, the minimal presence of it, I think is going to be, it does not override for me to allow them to do something like this. And, and actually for a segment of population that's probably going to enjoy it. And it, and it's really not going to impact, in my opinion, somebody sending their kids into the, into the business. Compared to going into a place that's going to sell buckets of beer and pitchers of beer, which that's happened, you know, a place downtown years ago and, you know, with the one cup, one person, I just, it's not going to have a big impact, I don't think, on people bringing their kids in.
You know, in our neighboring community of DePere, they got a theater there and they sell, I know they sell beer there. Um, I have never heard of any problems with it. It's still, that, that started a long time ago and it's, from what I'm understanding, it's still going yet today. So I agree with, it's, it's not their major income, it's a low impact to, to it. But I got to agree with Lynette. Lynette, it's hard to go anywhere where you don't have alcohol. Uh, look at the picnics, you know, the village itself has a picnic, the Ashwabanon Blast, and there, there's beer there. So it's, it's hard to find those places. And society has changed a lot. Do I agree with it? It can be questionable. But I think, uh, I, I, I don't know. I like your presentation. I think you did a great job. I think, uh, I, I've got to trust in your sincerity in saying, we will police it very well. And we've got our clerk there saying, you won't have a license if you're going to not abide by our rules.
Part, part of my reason for not supporting this is because we have one of these facilities in the area already, this gives the customer base, your customer base, an option either to utilize, uh, one, one of your facilities that serves alcohol and it gives the customers on the other side an opportunity for an alcohol-free setting.
Okay. Any more questions, comments?
Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote, please. Roll call, vote, please.
Trustee Allison Williams.
In favor. So, yeah.
That'd be aye.
Yeah, aye.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bukowski.
No.
Trustee Melczeski.
No.
President Kardaski.
No.
Four ayes. The resolution passes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, eleven H. Discussion and possible action on ordinance twelve dash one dash seventeen relating to alcohol licensing distance requirements.
Well, Madam Chair, I'd like to, in behalf of the PAC, had discussions with our school superintendent and the manager of the PAC, and Lissa Marth, who is the chair of the advisory, the PAC Advisory Board, and would ask that this matter be withdrawn. I don't want to table it. I would just rather have it withdrawn for the time being. And there's a number of reasons why. Lissa and her group are going to take a, some time and look at other similarly situated facilities in the state. Apparently, there are others who are either attached to or very close to schools, and they're gonna take a look at that. And Kate is then going to, our PAC manager is going to, over time, take a look and see what effect this has. And we have a new school superintendent coming in June, so there are a number of reasons to just hold it off. And I suspect it'll come back someday, maybe in a not-too-distant future, but I'd just ask that it be, that their request be withdrawn in their behalf right now.
Okay. Do we have to have a motion to withdraw that, or just?
I'll make, yeah, well, let's make it, let's make it for it. I'll make a motion to withdraw this item from the agenda. Is that all right, Tony? Is that, is that proper, or what?
We're receiving place on file.
Yeah, receive and place on file. There you go. Thank you. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, item eleven H.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to receive and place on file, item eleven H. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Eleven I. Action on resolution number R one dash two dash eighteen, disallowance of claim, Mr. Kevin Burmeister.
Mr. Burmeister seeks reimbursement by the village for a damaged claim to his vehicle as he claims as caused by the village. A little background, it is in your packet, allegedly a village snowplow struck a water inspection head, causing pieces to strike his vehicle. And our insurer denied the claim, or recommends denying the claim, rather.
It's been recommended by them to deny it, so.
How do you, I mean, if we damn, if we hit something and it hit another, hit something, how can we deny that?
That was my question exactly.
It's not something you have forewarning of that potentially happening. I mean, any, it's, it's no different than any vehicle flings a rock and something happens.
If a snowplow hits a mailbox.
That's different. You're not supposed to be hitting a mailbox unless, of course, the mailbox is dangling into the road, and then that's a different case.
But if it hits a water main that's in the street that we maintain, and it, something comes off of it and it hits his car, you're saying that it's not, if it hit a, hit a construction barrel and it hit his car, would we be responsible?
Depends on where the construction barrel is. I mean, I don't mean to be, it's not about, and it's a very unfortunate situation, but it depends on where it is. Like, if we had noticed that the water main, somebody complained about it six times, and we never did anything about it.
It's an accident, I understand, but I don't understand why they can't, why they don't pay for it.
Well, wasn't the water main, was it?
Then we would have to cover all sorts of things that just happened.
It was just a cover, right? Was it a small cover?
It's actually a portion of it that came off, or portions of it, and it just happened, you know, sometimes they heave and unanticipated, and then that's what happens.
Yeah, it's unanticipated. It's an accident. It's something that happens.
What, let me, Mark, you're in this, what happens, and I'm not being a wise guy here, what happens if I'm driving by, same guy, same gentleman, and I hit a rock in, in the road, and it goes and hits his car and does the same damage? What?
Your insurance company would pay for it.
Well, okay, let's have another scenario. I have a crack in my windshield, and I say it came off a Ken's car going down Highway forty-one. Is he responsible?
Yes.
How do I, how do I prove that he?
You got a license number.
How do I prove that?
I've had, I've had stuff come off of vehicles that are, are dump trucks, and it comes off and it hits people's cars, and that, that, that dump truck driver is responsible for his load.
That's a different situation. The contents of your vehicle are expected to be secure. There's requirements in terms of covering it and all those things.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
That's different than there happens to be something in the road that gets kicked up by a vehicle.
Okay, so I'm cutting my grass, and I hit a rock, and it gets thrown and hit something, or, or...
We've had that happen, too.
Okay, so is that covered?
Generally, not, unless we were doing some, the difference is, are you doing something that was negligent? Did you have notice of a problem, and did you fail to take care of it?
That's not right.
Did you have a duty of, or standard of care in that respect?
And, and just to add on to that, I mean, that's, it's notice of a dangerous type of condition, and we didn't do anything about it, and things happen, and also the law provides governments immunity for those sorts of actions as well. So that's another basis in which the recommended denial came through from our insurance company.
I ask those same questions, Mark.
I think there's a sympathy that we all feel for the individual. I think it's the volume of things that we would be responsible for, and where would that, where would that stop, and then what situation? If you don't follow what the insurance recommendation is, then you need to set up some other guideline for you in terms of when you're gonna say no, when you're gonna say yes. And if you're gonna say yes, Katie, bar the door.
Well, I agree with some of the things that were said, but I also agree that we weren't negligent. I don't think we were negligent. We're plowing snow out there, and we're not negligent. So I'll move to approve the disallowance of claim.
We have a motion and a second to approve the disallowance of claim.
Hold on.
Discussion.
I don't know, I, I just, sometimes doing the right thing is not doing what the right thing that the insurance company always tells you to do.
I've got that right.
Yeah, we all know that. And I hate to think that we would, if we accidentally hit something and accidentally threw it up on the guy's car and dented it, or did whatever to it, now his insurance company's got to report the claims, and his insurance is gonna go up. I'm not in favor of that. I'm not, I think that's something that we should be taking care of. I don't care if we have to do it internally and not file a claim or whatever, because I can't imagine it's that high.
I know you're not gonna believe the story, but it happened to me once. They were plowing a lot, and he hit the same object and creamed out my wife's windshield mirror, scuffed up some paint. It happened on a private lot, though, and they immediately hauled the car away and took care of it, and that was the end of it, with no question.
Who paid it?
They did. Never asked, they just took care of it. That was it, the end of it. I mean, yes, it was an accident. It wasn't done on purpose, but that thing was sticking up enough for the blade to catch it and throw it, and it just happened there, sat the car. I wonder if that piece, and that piece is not a very small piece, wonder if that hit a person?
The same thing, though. I, I understand what you're saying. God bless you. That's the first thought I had when I read this. But it's not legally negligent. We're not negligent. He didn't see it there and hit it on purpose. And, and, I mean, you're gonna hit a lot of things when you're plowing snow, and that's our responsibility, is to go out and plow snow. They can't worry about every little thing that's gonna happen out there. Otherwise, you won't get any snowplow.
The question that I had, I went through all these questions, too, to everybody. The questions that I would have, if we start allowing this and going against what our, our insurance company recommends, do you open the floodgates?
That's my main concern.
That's, that's what you need to know, and that's where my husband and I had the conversation where he, driving down the road, and a stone flew up from somewhere and cracked his windshield. And so, say, six miles down the road, he was behind a truck, and he said, "Well, a stone just flew up and hit my windshield." How, you can't prove that. You know, it wasn't an on-purpose thing, you just, so, anyway.
I'm not against this gentleman being made whole against, you know, and Mark's got a really valid point before, you know, if there's some other way to take care of this. But if, like Allison said, we open this can of worms.
Yep, you open.
And they will keep coming.
Yep.
Yep.
So, okay. Okay. So here we go. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R one dash two dash eighteen, disallowance of claim. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
Motion carried. Eleven J. Review and action regarding Cormier Road Sewer and Water Reconstruction Contract. Doug.
This project, if you remember, started back in 2015 when we received a SDP Urban Grant for the reconstruction of the roadway on Cormier Road between Oneida and Ashland. That's a three-year process. When you get one of these grants in terms of designing the roadway and getting it out to bid and then construction, you follow the previous year with the utility construction. So that's what's happening. Twenty nineteen is when the road actually gets reconstructed. This year is when the water and sewer main will be relayed, and that's what this contract is in, in regards to work with Ayers Associates. Craig Schu is here from Ayers. You'll be seeing his smiling face at a number of meetings here in the future, because they'll be doing some work on Mike McCarthy Way. But finished the design work this fall and early winter, put it out to bids, received bids in January. We had eleven pre-qualified contractors. We had just about every contractor in the area bid, and we had everybody turn in bids, ranging from just over one point one million to just over one point seven million. The low bid being Crew Check Construction at one million, one hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. That's a little calling card of his company. He does that type of number in each of his bids. So we've worked with Crew Check Construction in the past, most recently on our transmission main project that went down Morris Avenue to the Marvell Tower back in 2005. Don't have any questions or concerns at this point. The one item I do have to clarify is the road construction portion of this project is funded by TIF III. The utility reconstruction portion is funded by the respective utility. So the sewer and water utility will be paying for these portions of the construction. We'll be looking at getting construction started here probably in April, March, if all of a sudden it would hit eighty degrees. I don't think that's going to be happening this go-around. We'll be having a public informational meeting coming up in February or March, once we have the contractor, have the contract set, have a schedule in place. And with that, I'll, I'll take any questions, or if you have our recommendation for approval.
Well, I don't think there's no denying that Doug did a good job. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award the bid for the water and sewer reconstruction on Cormier to Crew Check Construction in one million, one hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. Eleven K.
Are you sure you don't want to say something, Greg? Are you okay?
Your chance.
Eleven K. Discussion and possible action on a quote for aerial lift truck. Tim.
In the 2018 budget, we had money allocated for the replacement of our 1998 aerial lift truck. The budget amount was one hundred eighty-five thousand. We sent bid quotes to respective, either manufacturers or vendors throughout the country for their consideration, and we did get two bids back that were from a local bidder, utility sales and service out of Little Shoot. And the, the two bids were actually identical, except for the chassis that they were gonna provide to that vehicle. We, working with Spencer, our mechanic in the garage, he recommended, and we specified a nine-liter Cummins diesel engine in that vehicle. We did get one bid with a six-point-seven-liter Cummins diesel engine in it, which did not meet the specifications that we had set forth. So the Freightliner bid with the nine-liter Cummins diesel engine was the, was the bidder that was qualified for that. Their bid came in slightly over budget at one eighty-nine, four hundred and twenty-one. And speaking with the, the vendor from the, the company, they had a greater-than-expected price increase in steel. We did have a, a certain amount of price increase allocated to the new year, as well as the chassis manufacturer had a, a price increase greater than what they were anticipating. The good news is, we did bid it out early in the year. They were able to hold the prices on the aerial portion of it from their vendor, which was obviously good news. The one thing that we did, we, we went to different communities and kind of looked at what they have for, for vehicles. With the city of Appleton, their Public Works Department, they have two similar vehicles in their fleet. The one thing that we did not put in our original price quote was a, an LED arrowboard on the back of the vehicle. And they do all the Christmas decorations on College Avenue. They hang them from one corner to the other, and stuff is suspended, and it's, it's pretty neat. But they have an LED arrowboard on the back of that vehicle. And I posed the question to, to leave our operations supervisor, and he would absolutely love that idea, because that's gonna help him with his manpower and equipment, basically minimizing one extra vehicle and an operator driving that vehicle when they work on those busy streets, hanging Christmas lights or flags or whatever decorations we have out there.
So you did get that?
Yeah.
That is included in that bid price, yes.
You know, Tim, I, I was just talking about this today, that it's tough, it's tough to speculate a year from now what something's gonna cost. So our department heads and, and staff in the departments always do a good job, but this is one of those that just didn't come in this, where we wanted it to be, and the cost of everything going up so quickly right now, with all the building going on, I think, I think you hit pretty close to what, what we needed, so.
Move to approve the choice suggested by staff.
I'll second that on the question. Did I say, and I'm not disagreeing with you, did I hear you say you're gonna eliminate an extra vehi, eliminate a vehicle by putting up these decorations?
No, it would be during the operations of putting them up and taking them down. We run a chase vehicle behind our current bucket truck. As a safety precaution, with a large arrowboard directing people out of that lane of traffic. So by adding this eight-hundred-dollar directional arrowboard, we can eliminate a pickup truck, the arrowboard, as well as additional personnel to do that operation.
Okay, I like you, I like what I heard, because I thought there was an awful lot of people putting up decorations for what was needed, so, good choice.
You could have volunteered, you know?
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the bucket truck expenditure for one hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Eleven L. Possible action on Canterbury Park Shelter Bid. Allison.
It's gonna be me. Unfortunately, Rex went home sick today, so we're all on flu alert here. So he did a park shelter bid for Canterbury Park. This is just the shelter. He would, sometimes we've subcontracted some things out in terms of the actual erection, and that, that would be the remaining dollars in terms of what he had budgeted. But the low bid was from Commercial Recreation for twenty-three thousand, four hundred thirty-six dollars and eight cents. Don't ask me anything else, 'cause I probably don't.
Just went through Park Board last week or the week before and everything. The only difference in it is that we have polygon structures in other parks. That was the only other discussion that we had. It's only a slight...
other discussion that we had. It's only a slight seven hundred, three hundred dollar difference between these, I can't remember now, it's something like that, three hundred, I believe, roughly. So that was the only discussion we had about it, if we wanted to stick with the same structures, or we just went with a low bid on it as the recommendation from Park Board. Rex was real comfortable working with these guys. Yeah. He didn't have any issues, or doesn't, doesn't think he'll have any issues.
Wasn't that gonna be two feet shorter than the ones they normally buy?
The park only accommodates a shorter one. That's why he, he recommended.
Right, right, right. I, I read that. Okay.
The structure would be similar to what we have at Waterford Park and Sand Acres Park. Those are twenty-six-foot structures. The one that we're proposing for Canterbury will be a twenty-four foot. Very similar in design, although from a different manufacturer.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid for Canterbury Park Shelter for Commercial Recreation, twenty-three thousand, four thirty-six oh eight. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the structure for Canterbury Park from Commercial Recreation for twenty-three thousand, four thirty-six oh eight. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Anything for next gen?
That's correct.
Anything for next agenda, or call Village Style?
I'll move to go to closed session.
During, during the meeting, the Village Board of the Village of Ashwaban may convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section nineteen eighty-five, sub one E, for the purpose of A, update and possible action on development projects related to Holmgren Way and Mike McCarthy Way in tax incremental district numbers three and five, where competitive and bargaining reasons require a closed session. And B, discussion regarding potential development on Ridge Road, where competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. The Village Board may thereafter reconvene into open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section nineteen eighty-five, sub two, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
I'll move to go to closed session.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, vote.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yep.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bukowski.
Aye.
Trustee Melchesky.
Yes.
President Kardaski.
Yes.
We are in closed session.